Oh, yeah. Well, that was pretty wild.
Here was something else.
Okay, guys. Really, and I thought they would be here, to be honest, and maybe they're just running late, but. I don't have too much on the work agenda, other than I'm trying to pull it up. The development agreement for Peterson's, based on our conversation last work session, so two weeks ago. We incorporated that all into a development agreement. Liam approved it. I sent it out to you guys. Uh, it's pretty simple. It just. Pinpoints all those things. I don't know if there's any comments on that or questions. Cause we're gonna have a public hearing tonight about it.
The only thing I had that we talked about last time was that. So, that's cool. We're gonna count the little part they have there.
Just for that, yeah.
But we had mentioned that in the future, if they do any development at all, they've gotta provide us a site plan for the entire site because we don't have one.
Right, so they actually already did that. Yes, so that was part of this. Yep, correct. Yeah, and that is still kind of going back and forth on that, yeah.
Is on the, in our documents this time, isn't it?
Um, I've seen it. I think it's in the.
They're just a site plan.
Oh, just a site plan, yeah. The utility drawing Matt has reviewed with the storm drain. And that's why in our, let me look before.
Does that take care of the northwest irrigation issue?
I got some information on that. If you want, can I just share it now?
Yeah, go ahead.
Cause Lou wasn't gonna be here, so he looked at the new one and he sent me an email. He called me and we had this conversation. And, um, he thought at one time that, that. It didn't only, it didn't include the area where the coaster building is and everything like that, but you look at the plot and it covers everything, all that entire piece of property. But he was concerned about the outflow and where it's going. So I called Rob this afternoon, talked with him, and he said that from that, uh, from that north.
Robbie Spronk or?
Robbie Spronk, yeah. From that north, where the retention pond is that we're using, as the ten percent. It flows out through there. It goes, it goes from a eighteen inch to a twenty-four inch pipe. And it goes out and it, and it goes into our ditches. And it flows out through and out down the ditch line, past the church farm, behind that Slater's and all that stuff. So, once it leaves their site, it doesn't hit anything regarding western irrigation. So.
What about impacts for, like, yesterday, for example?
What was that? Well, I went and looked at it. I saw it coming out. And, uh, the, the swell of the borrow pit there along the fence line. I can't tell, even driving past it, I can't tell where that water's flowing out. I mean, I can't see the drain from the Peterson side to going under the canal. And I think Steve Peterson's one that told me that there was a, it goes from an eighteen to twenty-four. But I went to the other side and walked around it, and it comes under the canal, and it kinda just, it's like a siphon that just bubbles up. And it, it kinda dispersed a little bit to the north in the swell, but for the most part, he, Rob said it goes south a little bit. Goes down that drain, past the legends.
And they provided a map showing in their thing. And it's not very clearly depicted, but Matt has signed off. They, it's not in here, but he did all the storm drain calculations. And submitted them to Matt as well. So in his memo, you won't see that piece of it. So it is clear that, so they have, they have, from Nate and Robbie's perspective, they've been satisfied per Matt.
Exactly. And Rob said they've been doing it for all this time. If it can handle yesterday's storm, it'll handle anything. Here's the memo from. From Matt Robertson, and he just says that the.
It provided the stormwater report with the storm drain pipe detention information and calculus showing.
Yeah, and no storm drain system is proposed as part of the amendment, so. As far as the drainage goes, we're good.
A new building shouldn't add anything because they already have.
It's already impervious.
They're just going.
Yeah.
They're just gonna go off the roof and down like they do with the rest of it, so.
Yeah, it's already an impervious surface, so it's not gonna, nothing's gonna change. And if it can handle what it did yesterday. Did you guys drive, if you've driven past there, yesterday, the track hoe in that detention pond in the night building?
Was it underwater?
Yeah, it's crazy. There was a, there was a little mini X in the, in that detention pond, in that detention basin by the, by the, uh, night building, the garage.
Oh, cause they're still constructing that?
Yeah, and. This is the picture they took.
It was fun watching the.
See that? You guys see that?
Oh, yeah.
Because it's, they're working on the, the retention pond over there against that garage. And anyway, but, but I think that one drains into the Peterson's, that other one.
Yeah, they have pipe.
Yeah, and it would have to be, and so it kinda just went down evenly.
Goes out that way to that landscape area, I believe.
Anyway, but if it can handle what it did yesterday, I'm not a bit concerned about it at all.
Hundred year storm right there.
It happens every three years now.
So anyways, that's what, and you'll notice in this one. Peterson, okay, oh, sorry. Peterson, Inc. is the owner of the building, the roller coaster building. Yes, that is the roller coaster building, but the agreement with this one for the site plan is Peterson Properties. So Liam had them both be parties to the agreement, basically. And once the roller coaster building is down, technically, Peterson, Inc. is released from the agreement. Because they have satisfied their peace.
Well, from what I understand, in my conversation with Steve Peterson, he actually, he owns the property.
That's why he, it is him.
That's why his name's on the.
Well, it is him, yeah.
Peterson, yeah.
Yeah, no, he's Peterson.
Right, that's what I mean, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
So, yes, that is.
So then, once that building's down, then he's released from the.
No, no. Steve is on this. This is.
I understand that.
Yeah, once the building's down, Peterson Incorporated, the company, is released from it.
Okay, okay, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, is there any other questions on it?
I, I read through this and.
Pretty simple.
Pretty simple.
Yeah, it's actually one of the easiest agreements I've seen.
How do we get a site plan out of this in the future?
Plan, we got, yeah.
And then we got the commitment.
So that if they develop anything more, that they've gotta abide.
You know, you know, Greg did mention, there was a comment about there are another buildings going up, but they're working with Nate on a site plan for that. And so we should see.
And there was something, it's not even, what did he say? It's a blast, it's not even like a.
It's a sandblaster.
Yeah, but it doesn't have permanent footings. There was something weird about it, so they're figuring that out.
Metal looking thing over there. Yeah, there's kind of a. But, but they, I think they came to us a few years ago. There was a big machine that they got for the Sky Design from Hill Air Force Base or something that was, you remember that from? It was a big, it's a big internal sandblasting type of thing, if I remember right. It's been a few years since it's came up to us on it, so.
So, yeah, that's.
But, uh, who's that guy who was on the planning commission with you? The, the worship Peterson now, who was with.
Oh, that said he was, and I don't remember him?
Bill Owens, yeah. And he said that, and he's the one that's been in contact with Nate on this other build that they're working on right now.
Oh, okay.
That's what Nate told me the other day. So.
Now, one thing we've talked about with other, um, development agreements is especially when there's like work to be done by the developer over time, and like it's not guaranteed to be part of what's happening today. Uh, do we need to be looking at any kind of like bond, bonding or whatever to ensure that those obligations get met?
They never bonded for developments because those are usually like your astro-related items for infrastructure. So, no, but it is, it'll be a recorded document that we at least have some bearing on. And they won't get C of O on their new building without taking that other one down. Like, there's some measures to withhold. The rest of it is, um, all.
No, nobody's here.
Like not.
Let's grab that mic.
Not stuff to do, essentially. They're gonna build the building. There's nothing that they have to do other than take their roller coaster building down. And then.
And they'll do that before occupying it.
Yeah.
That's part of the agreement, so.
The way I read it, we should be fine, but like if they were to trade hands again, like get, go into new ownership, there wouldn't be any kind of.
Sticks with the.
That was one of the first things I thought I saw in there, was that it was tied to the lot or the.
It's tied to the land, but I need to confirm that, cause the development agreement is tied to the land in that ownership.
But I think it's the remaining twenty-one acres, though.
It's twenty-eight acres.
I know, but there's twenty-eight, but you take seven from.
Those are all of it.
The whole pro, so it's based on, so that any new development will have to comply with the, okay. That makes sense.
The development agreement, cause I'm trying to think how that would. Yes, it should stick there. I'm trying, that might be a Liam question, but it should stay there.
It says the agreement runs with the land and it's binding upon any successors.
Okay, then we're good. So it'll just follow. Some development agreements are specific to people, too. Like, they don't necessarily follow. So that's perfect, then. And no matter how that changes hands, we're in good shape.
Well, going off this email that Lou sent me.
Wait, I did Lou how many?
He says, talk to, well, he was, first, he was concerned about one issue. But he found, it was regarding, he thought it was only just part, the day, the ten percent after this agreement was only on part of the property, but he was wrong on that. He looked at that. So anyway, this one here, he says. Uh, talking to Robbie about the outflow pipes and ditch receiving water. Uh, written to documentation between Peterson and the owner of the ditch, which is us now. I mean, that's what we found out. And to get some language showing their responsibility of, for their stormwater, once it runs offsite, but that's all null and void because it's all goes into our ditch, once it hits that. So Lou went through this, and he, this is all he had. So, I call that a win.
No, I think it's pretty simple.
No, it's.
I don't have any.
No, you did a great job in what you did, cause I know you worked your tail off.
Yeah, that was a rush.
Yeah, it was, we were stuck in kind of an awkward spot.
Right, like we needed to give him guidance, but no one knew what to do, like.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Weird. It's a path forward, and that's.
Yes, there you go, it's a path of something.
See, things would've gone better if you would've been at that work session.
I know, I'm sorry.
No, it's not. I'm just teasing you. I'm just giving you a bad time.
And it sounds like from the contractors that I've been communicating with, they're going to slowly start to put the rest of it in, into compliance because they know more buildings maybe are coming or something to that degree, so. Sounds like they're gonna try to work and clean up stuff now.
Yeah.
Versus when they need all of a sudden.
I know, they're not being out the piping and things like that right now. They're working on.
They should have all that, just like cleaning up some of the lot lines that fit in buildings and just such things like that. Who knows what we'll end up doing, so.
For a while, I understood that they would just, if they needed a pipe laid, they would just run the pipe.
Yeah, or a building.
Yeah, and so I think they're trying to get all that napped out, which is part of their whole trying to figure things out.
Yeah, they have all that. They piped it all.
They've got it all now?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I was, okay, I was interested.
So are there any other questions on this one?
No.
Do you guys wanna go into an update on, you said timelines and other things?
Look at the timeline from the, from the, uh, sorry.
And while these, so, thinking ahead, so next planning commission, we're gonna have the Jersey Fields is what it's called subdivision on, to discuss with the applicant, which is the new one that's proposed on Far West Drive. And it's like forty-ish lots?
Thirty-nine. Plus a detention basin. Yeah, forty lots.
So, thinking in your head what you might have concerns of on that.
We were talking last night about flow of traffic, them trying to.
Yeah.
Going out to Northland rather than onto Far West.
Well, no, 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 no.
No, there was, there was just some talk that we, that we just kinda discussed off loosely.
No, there's no, there's no entrance for the north side.
I understand that.
Oh, okay, yeah, no.
No, there's nothing like that.
The north would be used possibly for construction only.
Yeah.
Oh, so I'm gonna misunderstand.
No, no, there wasn't.
Like what you and Lou were saying is.
Well, the, the idea was, my idea was to swap, have things swapped, and so the exit goes out. Because they own that right of way. And it goes out to.
Public road, yeah.
Public, to the, uh, real and wide.
Yeah, honestly, they should.
And have two, have a couple of homes facing Far West Drive, and the rest going out the other way. Then that would alleviate everything off of that other way.
Actually, not a bad idea.
Far West Drive, we'd finally get a second.
These, they have, they just have maybe two months.
Be connected, though.
It won't be connected.
Eventually it has to.
The hard part is they don't have.
What was that?
Thirty-nine, they need two exits out of there.
But technically, Far West Drive is considered a two exit because you have that emergency exit, so the fire code, the fire marshal. Yes, cause the fire marshal gave them approval. But that's not a, so in my head, I was thinking the other one, like you have two on the front edge and then the rest of the homes go. Cause I don't know that you'd want a through road.
But on our, and I know, right now for that subdivision, maybe no, but on our, on our general plan for roads, we have that road.
It's there, it's up.
So.
But there's something, their property, I think if you look it up, and we'll talk about it next week, but I think if you look it up, they don't have a large enough access to get out to that other one. They have a construction access, I think it's like twenty feet. But they don't have a large enough.
Yeah, they might have to do some, an angling or something, I don't know. It was just, it was just something I thought about, that if we could get it to go out that other way, then there wouldn't be such a problem going southbound with stuff, so. Anyway, it was just, it was something.
Well, yeah, so think of all your questions and concerns that you might have regarding Far West Drive.
They'll be here.
Lots, the, I mean, thirty-nine new homes out there is a lot. I'll make sure you get one. There was one somewhere. Where did we? No, I think maybe I've only seen it.
I don't know where we're talking about.
Oh, I'll make sure. It's where, do you remember that, that?
Chet's property that's.
Yes, it's Chet's.
Remember the one that came in last year to be a continuation of the M one, and it got denied? It's that parcel. I'll make sure to send out.
How would they get out to Ruon Light?
This, this is all I've got right here, if you guys will look at it.
The new road that the industrial place has.
And that's a small view of it.
Um, is.
Yeah, thirty-nine single parent ones.
Connor's like, I'm gonna live there. They don't have a building, yeah.
They, they almost, they're split down the middle. They each own, I think, five acres or something like that. I can't remember. You can, if you look at that Google view.
You know, so the Watson's warehouse is, is there now.
Okay.
It's not completed, but it's a huge monster that we're. Realized it was gonna be that big.
Well, if it was.
Four hundred thousand square feet.
Back up into Associated Foods?
No.
Not quite, but it's right there. It's, that's exactly where.
Too bad we can't get a road from Lou, from Associated Foods, you know, that, up that way. It's just. But Associated Foods are kind of, well, they might want to expand, and so.
Well, it's not a bad idea if you get, it's just a crappy place to live, but.
Always is, it is.
You would, if you flip that all around and then there may, but I, yeah. So, those questions will be really good to.
Just think of what you want.
I also think after yesterday.
Oh, yeah?
Big questions around, it seems like everybody's going after developers about flooding and everything.
Yeah.
That seems like a new topic now of, okay, is there enough? Like, for example, my neighborhood?
Yeah.
Did great.
Yeah.
Cause they had a well-planned retention pond and like, nobody's house flooded. But it just seems like everyone north of twenty-seven completely flooded.
But that's because the main trunk lines are, were at capacity. So that's like a overall infrastructure issue, cause you're right.
Is that our infrastructure, or is that somebody we need to work with?
I believe it's all that stuff from originally, not Central Weber, but just the, I mean, everything running off at that rate, no matter what. In going into a pipe that fast is never going to flow a hundred percent correctly.
When you saw it once in a twenty-year event yesterday, something like that, right?
The secondary road's going into a primary road.
It's weird those keep happening, you know, every year, all these once in a twenty year.
Right, it, it, there's some, but then there are areas of the city that are older that, you know, tend to es- especially because they kinda go down like this.
Seems more of a flood plain.
Yeah, and those are, all of those homes are raised basements and built with sump pumps, et cetera. So, completely different aspects.
And unfortunately, sometimes some of the sump pumps are still piped in to the sewer system.
Well, and this was, the storm drain was the one backing up yesterday.
Yeah, it was, yeah, that was the one that's causing problems.
North Oakton had some issues.
Driving around yesterday, some of the drains that were full and not, not running, I saw leaves and grass debris and all sorts of stuff over the storm drains. People just need to keep them clean.
Clean.
If they're out in front of their houses, they just need to keep them clean.
I see a lot of people blowing their grass into the gutter.
But it's not like if you go north, like, and the way that some of these outfalls are to work, that once those ponds do flow over, they are flowing into a street because the street has a curb and gutter, and then it can run down to the next storm drain. So a lot of what people think is bad is actually how the system is supposed to work.
That big old detention pond over at Happy Days is full to the brim. I was talking to Austin, he said, I didn't think it'd ever hold all that water. He said, I didn't think it'd ever fill up, but by the time we got over there to look at it, it was empty, but he said it was right over the river.
And you can thank your state legislation for that because we have to, you have to retain stuff at the eightieth percentile, so in eighty percent of your water, you can talk to this more, has to stay on site for a certain amount of time.
Oh, really?
Before it's released into the system. So that's why you have the retention basins, because it calculates that release. And then it's released into the storm drain system, so. And they're all planned for the hundred year storm.
I just don't, like, why was there?
Low spot right there by that drain.
Kayaking on a street.
Well, that's an older area that.
Well, why not?
Well, and inherently, if you look where it was, what happens? This goes here, and if you get someone's storm drain that's blocked with leaves and debris, or you get a sump pump that's pumping out into the street, that's calc- that was never calculated into the infrastructure.
There's word that people's sump pump is pumping into their own house, like pumping into their sinks and stuff.
Which goes into the sewer, which is a problem.
Right, which is a huge problem.
That's, it's illegal.
So, yeah, so, three, four, or five years ago?
Yeah, it was about eight, eight or ten, yeah. It was about eight years ago.
Eight years ago, there were a lot of people that got caught putting their stuff into the sewer, and then the sewer backed, backed up.
They piped their sumps right into their sewer, and then.
It's, it was in the emmett, it's above the canal from my house. I know what happened up there. And they had porta potties about every three houses. And it inundated the sewer system, and all the raw sewage went up in the basement of people's houses, and so they just.
But no matter, I mean, there's always gonna be.
You can never.
That seemed to be the narrative on the news last night, was.
The sewer?
No.
Oh.
These developers aren't taken into account. Flood, oh, you should, you should watch it, yeah. It was big, like.
Very uneducated.
Fox News did something on some ladies, it was over there, you know.
In Far West or where?
Yesterday, yeah, in that pond, she's like, there's sixty homes here, or whatever, there's not enough, um, retention basin. And if you look at the comments on the Facebook page, which I know it's Facebook, but it also is kind of, it's the signal of.
Right, right.
What their angst is, and it's developers' fault, it's the state's fault for building in areas without proper preparation. And then there's a bunch of people like, that's just what you get for living in a. Put people piling on people that are already in.
That's the hard part when you watch things like that, like, a lot of it is, is false. You get a newscaster that's out there that has no idea about what it goes into planning those systems. And here's the thing, when a subdivision comes to us, all of those calculations are done at the capacity that's left in the pipe. And there are those storms that do hit you, but no one flooded. Our streets did, but our, their homes did not. And that's what the system is supposed to do. If it accumulates in the street.
Dump out their leaves and trash.
Right, and that might be totally, if they don't have something that has an outlet, for sure, but our streets flooding, that's a much better thing than all the basements in Far West flooding.
You know, there's some few that were talking about how they ended up in the garages and things like that, but.
Sure, some people got in their basements.
Yeah, some of the basements, but.
Got a little bit in my basement. But it was coming up the, the basement walkout drain. It's funny because I have a, I have a sump well that's way deeper than that, and my sump pump in the house, they were bowing dry, but the for some reason, it found a path of least resistance.
Isn't that just like a French drain or something in your?
It's just a French drain, but, but it's a lot higher than my sumps, and I don't know why my sumps were dry.
Was something like equalized, like it didn't?
I think it was just, I just think, you know, you've got the gravel bed under there, and you've got the gravel under the stairs, the gravel under the patio. And it just did a path of least resistance kind of thing, so.
I mean, those streets, the curb and gutter are built for that, because that's how the water flows to those drains.
Only does that when the detention basin gets that high.
And Nate peeks around, this was yesterday or the day before, I forget, anyway. When it was in the middle of that heavy storm, and he says, Peterson Pond is at its max.
It was.
It will not cover the water flow they've committed to.
What is Peterson Pond?
Yeah, what's that?
What's Peterson Pond?
Peterson Pond? Peterson, Steve Peterson's got a pond in his back, way in the back. Between him and his business. Over here on eighteen hundred? Which Peter, are you talking to Steve Peterson's pond in the very back, in his, in his pasture?
I think it's, yeah, the one in his pasture is the one he was talking about.
The one over by the canal, past my house, all the way to the end of the cul-de-sac.
He said it was Chuck Paul. It will not hold the capacity they claimed it would.
No, well, this is the deep, they must, they're probably talking about the detention basin right there on the north end of Peterson.
The detention basin, I passed by that yesterday, it wasn't. It was, it was not for super long, though, it was.
No, no, but it, yeah, but it's, it's connected to that retention pond of the, on the Knights property. So.
I asked about it just to be sure.
Yeah, because Steve Peterson, it, it goes, it goes.
What are you talk, what, what are we talking about? Are we talking about Peterson's or Peterson's house?
Well, I was thinking it was Peterson's house, but it might be.
Detention basin on that north side of Peterson's.
But then Robbie told us today we were fine.
We are fine.
Must be a different one.
It's empty.
Oh.
No, it was, I looked at it yesterday, it was a capacity. It was.
But those are, that's what they're meant to do.
Exactly. Uh-huh. It was the same one that we were talking about earlier, about where it's draining out west.
Yeah, and they, they said today that it was good. If it held yesterday, it's fine.
Oh, it's, it's just a little bit of water that bothered it now.
It was still a little bit of rain coming down, but chances are it was yeah, pretty much done, so it was.
That's why they called it.
That's what those are built for, the hundred year storm. That's exactly what we got yesterday.
That's why you call it Peterson's Pond, is because it's that retention basin, because.
Hundred year storm, third year, second, second year.
This is the second year of the hundred year storm.
Tore my carpet out.
Let me rephrase. It's a calculation that you use based on the hundred year storm. So, if we get it every year, it is what it is. That's the capacity that it can hold.
See, we just got.
Raise the city.
Other places.
Yeah.
We're in a whole lot better shape now than we were twenty years ago.
But Connor, from an infrastructure standpoint, it's not actually about the level of what it is, it's that everything that's coming down so fast has to fit into a pipe. So if we were this high or this high, yeah, we, it would run off, but it still would go into those pipes, and those pipes. You know, when it's taking all that water at one time, can't squeeze everything in at once, so it has to have backup channels.
Little bit of a time is good, but not a lot of it at the time.
Right, and that fast. We got three inches of rain in three hours.
Yeah, when you develop places, you move the underground water's normal flow all, all around. So I lived here for twenty-three years without a problem, and then as soon as they built behind me, it, we've had problems.
Well, I was up, I was, I was up at two o'clock yesterday morning, it was coming down hard.
It was raining. I was talking to.
The deluge all night long.
Right, shitty developers. Okay, sorry to.
No, it's cool. We got, we got time.
Timeline?
Timeline. Um, I sent it out to everybody.
You did?
I emailed it.
Okay. I bet it's.
A while back.
Oh, okay.
It was the day after the.
Last time we.
Yeah, I, I was leaving, we were leaving town, and I thought, it was the day of the development meeting we had.
Okay.
But I, I was gonna wait until I got back, but I thought I better get it done. Anyway, so what we're looking at. I know I've gotta talk to Matt Robertson about getting PDF copies of the zoning ma, the most recent zoning maps. Greg and I, and Darren and Jason met with, and Lou met last night for an hour, and went over the, what was that?
Tuesday night that we met.
It all feels the same.[1739.34]
One day's running the other. You're right, it was Tuesday night. And, and we went over that, Greg's gonna, Greg's done some good, some good work in looking at the future and we discussed everything in all the roads. Excuse me. Anyway, so Greg, Pierce, and Connor and myself are gonna be over the parks. I brought the parks committee up to speed on what we're doing. And there was a, can't remember what it's called, but Katie got a grant from the Utah Outdoor Recreation. That will help us identify, engineer and identify the future, you know, the current parks and the future parks. And so we discussed it a little bit in our last park meeting, but I'll get with you guys as far as, we have a park meeting, another park meeting, I think. Next Wednesday, if I'm not mistaken, I can't remember. Anyway, so. I gotta find out from Katie, get some more information on that, so then we can meet. Connor, I will some, sometime in the next week or so, meet with you and just show you what pictures we need to be updated. I, I know we just need to switch things up a little bit.
It would be nice to get some of the pictures now, like this front new city off, like city office, cause it has trees and leaves and things on it, like that front picture is, no. Oh, yeah, that, just that front picture.
Oh, yeah.
To get that, yeah, before the leaves go away.
I like that, I like that idea better.
Yeah, any, anything but the midwinter bare leaf.
I mean, this is, this is on the introduction, so it'll look like that. Oh, and the, this, this is the mountain view, this is a conceptual drawing of the mountain view park. So you need a real photo of that, cause it's completed. And anyway, I'll go through your thoughts on this, on other pictures and stuff, so your wife can take the pictures. He volunteered his wife, by the way, to do that.
I did hear that, that's wonderful. He volunteered his wife to do that.
I was just gonna say, it's probably voluntold.
No, it's not, because it's the opposite. If she was telling him to do it, it'd be voluntold.
That's true.
But with him telling her to do it, it's definitely volunteer.
I took the responsibility and I'm going to sub out. Actually is good at it.
Delegate, that's great.
I can take them, but not gonna be anything special.
I didn't assign you anything, cause I knew you're awfully busy.
Thank you, I appreciate it very much.
This is something that I can manage and take care of that, that lines your load. So anyway, so what we're, what our thought is, we're gonna report on everything on, for the October ninth work session.
The October ninth, okay, you're gonna, okay.
Timeline wise, we wanna have everything completed and report to what we've done on October ninth. Then on October twenty-second, which I sent the email out, on October twenty-second, we'd like to hold the open house.
Oh, okay.
And then November thirteenth, have the public hearing and pass it, make that recommendation to the city council that night.
Okay, so let's, are you gonna remember to put these in front of Lindsay? How, I'm trying to think how I'm gonna remember these.
I can send, I can send, I can send Lindsay the same copy that I sent you guys.
Well, okay, so you're thinking, go through the, go through the dates again, PC work session.
PC work session October ninth, with all the completed, everything completed. That's our goal, to have everything done and report on October ninth. We don't need to do videos or anything like that, I don't think that's necessary this time.
No. Then what was your next date?
The open house October twenty-second.
October twenty-second, that's a Wednesday.
Is it? Yeah, Wednesday the twenty-second. Why can't we just do the public hearing the next day? Or say, no, we gotta set a public hearing on October twenty-third.
Yeah, you don't have to set a public hearing anymore.
I'm sorry?
You don't have to set a public hearing. PC general plan update, open house, okay?
We don't need to set a public hearing for this one?
Well, you don't need to set one anymore. Like, you don't need to have an agenda item to set it, we can just set it.
Just set it.
Yes. So when do you wanna have the public hearing?
Let's do it, well, we can do it the next day then.
Do you think everything will be ready?
Oh, you're right, probably not.
Well, I don't, I don't, it's fine. I just wonder, is there any input?
I was just thinking.
Yeah, should the next work session on the twenty-third be to discuss input of the open house?
I agree, yeah, yeah. I, I didn't think it, Janu, I didn't even take that into account.
After.
Be back.
And house, okay.
We'll have an open house as a formality.
Cares.
Then when, you're thinking the thirteenth?
November thirteenth, which is the first Thursday in November.
PC public hearing, general.
Yeah, any input, any suggestions that we, they have, then we can add that on and, and then.
Perfect.
And then have the final public hearing on the thirteenth in November. I just want it done by the end of the year. Yeah, and so. But, and everybody's responsible for their own.
Items.
Items and stuff, and so we'll just report on the progress in every, maybe planning meeting or whatever.
Yeah, I think that's a great plan.
But I'll talk to, I'll talk to Katie and.
Yeah, and if we, to be truthful, in between there, there might need to be a joint work session, I think they asked for that.
I was gonna say, that's what I was gonna, that, that was the next one, I led you brought that up, because we need to hold a works, a joint work session with them as soon as we can. To go over, because Jason sent the red line out to both the planning and the city council.
Did anyone respond?
I think you did lie a little bit.
Sorry, let me rephrase. Did anyone from the city council respond?
No, I don't think so. So what we need, so I'll let you work on, can you work on that?
Yeah, so when we finish up the work session, the red line file for the general plan, that I re emailed out. Just as soon as the meeting.
Yeah, the meeting wasn't even over and he sent it out to both the city council and the planning commission.
You wanna send out an email to city council and planning and just say I'm scheduling a joint work session for.
There you go, I'll do that.
And then suggest, you want it sooner than later then?
I'd like to, because we need to get their feedback on the red lines. That way, we can maybe have a, maybe, depending on what they say. Then we can maybe make some adjustments, or Jason can make the adjustments during the meeting.
So maybe suggest, like, the middle of September, somewhere in that range, middle, something?
And I'm fine if everybody's okay meeting, it's, it's so much, I don't know. I'm thinking, see if we can set it at five thirty before the city council meeting, instead of, the city council coming here, let us go to them.
Oh, yeah, they would prefer theirs.
I know they would, so.
That or just do a completely different day.
That's, I'm here either way, so it doesn't matter which one.
No, I just mean a Wednesday, Tuesday, and do a completely different day if you need. Just do, suggest. September tenth or, sorry, those are Wednesdays. Eleventh or eighteenth, or twenty-fifth, I don't care. That, that becomes our day, but their week would be the eighteenth.
Yeah, let's do it sooner rather than later.
Yeah, so do.
I know, I'm gonna probably be gone on the eleventh.
So do that or the eighteenth is their week.
Okay, I'll just, I'll, I'll put the eighteenth.
You're gonna have to do the meeting on the twenty-fifth, by the way.
Yeah, I remember you telling me that. Yeah, I've already planned on it. Yeah, I'll, I'll do the eighteenth, cause the eleventh would be our meeting, isn't it?
Uh, the eleventh is our meeting, yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll send it out and ask them if we could do it on the eighteenth at five thirty.
You could try the fourth of September, but that's next week. I can't believe this.
Almost too soon.
Yeah, I won't be here, so. We have to talk after, cause next week's report, which will include this Peterson development, I won't be here for the report, so. I'll brief you, but I've thought about sending out an email to the city council to explain how we got to the development agreement, so there's not too much pressure on you to.
Yeah, I've been.
That's what I thought, and like, I felt like that might be the best way to explain it, cause I won't, I gotta go to a wedding.
Especially what, all the work that you did, which I still think is marvelous, seriously. But no, I always plan on doing the reporting because of your, since your others things going on.
But that one will be extra, that one I would usually make it too, because.
Okay, I'll shoot for the eighteenth. And then, yeah, I do know I'm covering for you on the twenty-fifth. So, okay.
You're in trouble.
She's going back and working on stained glass. Angie keeps the door open for her, so she can go back there.
They're stained glass back there?
Yeah, they, they have a room for just nothing but stained glass.
Really?
Yeah. She made me, she made me a beautiful rainbow trout for my birthday with stained glass. She's getting really good at it. So she's working on something else, but she works so much and she's not here on Wednesdays when they have those stained glass things, and so Angie leaves the door open and I have a key to the building, so she just goes in when she needs to. They got grinders, they got the full monty up there to, oh, yeah.
Really? In the senior center?
Oh, yeah. There's a, there's a wood shop in there. The guy goes in there, just, just on the south, on the north side, yeah.
Really?
There's a couple of rooms that are offset from the main thing that they.
In fact, the woodworking shop, the guy, there's a guy that works in there a lot, he's a widow, from what Angie said, and he brought all of his tools down there to share. And he goes down here and works on things in that.
That sounds dangerous.
They, yeah.
Yeah, nothing. I mean, the stainless glass sounds. You, you do it?
I, I have a wood shop in my garage.
Oh, he makes the.
Two car garage that I can barely fit one.
That blade on?
Whoops, there goes the tip of my finger.
More medics have been in my garage in the last couple of years.
Ah, see, yeah, exactly. Cause what, you got a blade, you got nicked, what?
I. Wood stool. Went straight down on my back and I bounced my head off the cement. And I had a big blister, about that big around on the back of my head. And three months later, I was getting back surgery.
Wow.
And all I was doing, I was standing on a one foot stool to get a piece of wood off the shelf. And when I went to step down, my toe caught the edge of the stool and I couldn't grab a hold of anything, it was. So I went straight down on my back. And I couldn't get up.
How'd you call nine one one?
My phone was in my pocket.
Oh, that's good.
Good thing she didn't see that. On the steel getting wood, she should've been on the ladder, I'm just kidding. So, yeah, old men and tools.
Yeah.
These in there were solder guns and, uh, glass cutters and they have a really cool bandsaw to cut glass with. Yeah, it's, it's really, it's a pretty good setup they got in there. So, anyway. But when she gets bored, she just comes down here and works, going, she gets home from work.
Any other, like ten minutes, any other concerns, things, anything from the city council we need to add to our list of to do's?
I can give you something either now or I can do it in my review. Oh, you know what?
No, we have ten minutes.
So, no, I'm signing this, I just. Our current annexation plan was written in two thousand and three. So it's twenty-two years old, almost twenty-three years old. The state legislature has modified the requirements for municipalities regarding annexation plans. So I will be reviewing that.
Modified as in what, like requiring updates to it, or what's the modification?
Um, I'm not absolutely sure of all of it yet, cause I just barely got the copies to start digging into this afternoon. But it, it has mostly to do with if you have any property that you may intend, or that you feel one of your neighboring landowner citizens would request annexation for. That you have to have a legitimate, published, it doesn't have to be codified, but it has to be at least by resolution. An annexation plan. And it spells out a few things necessarily. Notification of surrounding landowners and different things of that nature.
Do we have any property in our boundaries that are not annexed?
Yeah, well, actually, we do. Um, off twenty-seven hundred on the south side.
Oh, yeah, Orliffe's piece.
Yeah, there's, there's, behind Costa Vida and some of those.
That's what that is.
You know, right now, it's Pleasant View and Harrisville have been talking about it. And we border part of that, they, Harrisville does a little piece.
On that corner, right by the car wash and Rulon White is still in the county.
And then there's little ranchettes out on the west side of us here that, off of four thousand, that's still unincorporated Weaver County.
I think the car wash is actually in, in Weaver County, not far west.
Yeah, they are, cause that, that line that runs that, in between that.
I think there's, the mayor mentioned that there might be a way to divide that up between all three of us somewhere down.
Why would we not, why would, why would we not just get it? Cause our line runs pretty much.
Well, if we went, if we took the part right up to Rulon White. Then Harrisville could have the south side of, of east Rulon. And Pleasant View could have the north side of east Rulon.
Well, I feel like that intersection of Rulon White and twenty-seven hundred is pretty easy, like, we get the southwest corner. Harrisville gets the southeast corner, Pleasant View gets everything on the north side.
So that's something that would be coming down the road.
Pleasant View already, I mean, they already have the other side anyways, that Chick-fil-A, the Trigon, those are all Pleasant View.
I saw that piece between the Costa Vida and the car wash has got a for sale sign on it.
And then we'll probably add to that map those areas that have the potential of being annexed in future.
So anyway, I'll be.
Most of our boundaries are at least annexed then, cause you have over here, the south side, the Amazon stuff. Then you have the clean line over on the east side, so it's really just this northern side.
The west side's all zigzaggy.
Yeah, the west side. Well, and then you have the JDC ranch.
Which were just kinda.
Whole area.
I wonder what will happen. Yeah, it's unincorporated.
Another, that road is finally open from that other subdivision coming to the S curve, coming from the south side.
Yeah, it's real convenient.
What was that, is it? Do you live over there?
We have, all my daughter's friends live in that neighborhood, even though we're on the north side of it.
Left and you're down there. Yeah, it just opened it up, what about a week ago?
Something down the road that state will require you to take that ground, a city to take. Cause they're encouraging more and more that cities take ground and, and not stay in the county.
By staying in the county, yeah. But anyway, I'll, I'll be trying to update that, so I may come to the planning commission and say, give me some input on this or that or whatever.
I'm happy to devote like a work session to it when you get your hands around it.
There's one thing that I forgot. Uh, assignment, and you're familiar with this one, create a standard process for development agreements. And they said get with Liam. I'm just writing my notes.
I had already, I took it off of my list, cause Liam has it, it's codified, our process. Cause I asked Liam Abaya about it, and he said it's clear in our code how the development process goes.
So, okay, so that's assignment down. A lot of questions about this, this and all the paper away.
Yeah, yeah. No, good reminder though, cause I did the same thing.
No, I, I just, I told him, I said, well, the city council, I said, no, we don't have, I says, just lay it on us, we don't have anything to do right now. Of course, they knew I was joking.
Oh, yeah. Did they give you any assignments last night?
Just that.
Oh, did someone bring it up?
Katie did. This is when I reported the city council last week.
A long time, or?
No, I reported, I reported, this is my reporting.
Cause that was a while, yes. So that's the only thing, we just, she used to get with Liam, cause I gave that assignment to Liam and he said that it was pretty clear what our process was.
Yeah, well, let's see, and I never talked to Liam afterwards about it, I just wrote it down and.
I can remind her of that.
Anyway.
Okay, guys, break, we got seven minutes.
Few minutes.
Thanks, guys. Do you believe it's Labor Day?
It's crazy. It was nice to be freezing when I was.
Yeah, I don't, I needed to stay hot, hot.
We were, we had the, we had the trailer up fishing, we, we had the furnace on. It was forty degrees when we're heading out to the fishing hole. It felt so good. Wondering how you're ways. You know, Jason, or all of you, or both of you need to be up front, cause we're missing two people. Lou and Greg are. Are not here. I just gotta, sorry. I'm just a little slower than the average. Thank you.
I never got my shirt, so one's Geneva's, one's. There you go.
This is your shirt.
Cool.
From the Freedom Festival.
Was mine, did you grab my name quick?
Oh, yeah, you're, you're sitting where Lou's at, you're right.
These are cool.
Yeah, they're the Freedom Festival.
I don't know if you saw the. uproar when Plaine City's their Fourth of July celebration.
Oh, really? What happened?
It was called the Redneck Fourth of July. And like half the citizens were like, we don't want it to become this. This isn't, this is offensive.
I took that offensive. Why not be colored redneck? You know, you know. So my name is Earl. It's based, I'm just kidding. It's not based on my life. Greg gets it.
I remember that.
I hate that show. Because it stereotypes me and I just don't know. What show was that? My name is Earl.
Thank you though.
I turned the AC on.
Oh, that's what it was.
Yeah, it took a while to kick in, but you're right. It is, I'll see if I can go jump, jump it up.
Was it freezing last week? Oh.
It's too hot.
Oh, so it's so hot. Oh, what are these? Did I forget a shirt for something?
That was the Freedom Festival shirt. You never got yours.
No, I didn't. I wouldn't. No, I didn't order one.
You don't have to order it.
Well, I would have, I would have never gotten a large. Okay?
They gave you a large?
Yes. Yeah, exactly. Like it's a cute color though. I like it. Okay, this is where I'm taking solicitation for.
I got some carpet pulled up over there. Got the vent going.
We got a little bit under the door in the basement, but not a lot.
That's kind of how ours, they're just in the entry.
Yeah.
I know some neighbors work as lucky as me.
Got pretty bad.
Yes, way to volunteer. Thank you. Who's gonna do the prayer, guys?
I'm good.
Oh, thanks, Jason.
He's got, he's got to come up, yeah.
I don't think it does.
Yeah, they're like a. Maybe they're fixed.
Maybe that's why it's like this. Okay, y'all ready for this? I'm gonna call this meeting to order. We are going to start with a pledge from Darren and then a prayer by Jason. If everyone would stand, please.
Can we repeat the pledge with me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our eternal father in heaven, we're very grateful for this opportunity to be here to discuss the matters of the city and we're grateful for the 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 principles of freedom that our government is founded on. I say, please bless that we can remember those and remember the general welfare and benefit of all residents as we discuss matters tonight and do so in a fair and and by a concise manner. And we say and ask these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, first on our agenda is any public comment. Anyone in the public that has a comment about something that is not already on the agenda, you can come up and speak now. If there are none, we have report from city council. That's weird. That's way off center.
Because you folks didn't have a meeting last week, I've got two meetings to report. However, they were brief enough that I'm not going to take a lot of your time. We didn't have any comments, public comments last week, but the week before there was some concern brought up with regards to stop signs at twenty five seventy five west, twenty eight twenty five north. And so we've explained to them that we're in the middle of doing a lot of research and that things will be addressed there in the near future. Which leads me to the report we got from Jason and the traffic committee. We appreciate that. They have been doing quite a bit of the research, I guess you might say, with regards to the traffic in those areas and presented some alternative things for us to consider as a council to mitigate traffic concerns and add to the safety. So again, thanks, Jason, for the the traffic committee and all that you're doing there. We as city council approved the business licenses for NMR properties LLC, Carstein Pros LLC and Snow Squad. There was one application that was, there wasn't anyone there to be represented, so that was tabled. We entertained and we had public hearing regarding the easement for Ryan Smith and a barn that accessory building he's planning on putting up. The council voted to vacate that easement, so that was cleared and out of the way. I mentioned earlier about the annexation plan. We will be updating that and asking for some input from you folks as well. So that we can make sure we're in compliance with current state legislature. As far as reports from city council, we had Katie reported on the parks committee and the fact that we were a little bit short on funding for the disc golf course that we were going to put out here. We had a citizen in Far West that has come forward with some real professional background in that area that has offered to assist us and help us. We might acquaint, acquire the balance and funding and get the sponsorship we need. So that will be going forward, I'm pretty sure, in the near future. I think that was pretty much it. There was no, that's pretty much all I had that planning commission would be concerned for. Any questions for us? Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on to our first business item. A public hearing to receive public input regarding an amendment to the Far West City ordinance amending accessory building wall and eve height requirements for lots less than one acre. I don't know, does it not matter on the ones above one acre? I didn't know this was specific to the.
An acre or less.
Okay, do we have a motion to go on?
One acre less, less than an acre.
Yes. Do we have a motion to go into the public hearing?
I move, go ahead.
I move that we go into public hearing.
Motion by Darren.
I'll second.
Second by Lyle. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in the public hearing. Is there anyone that has anything to say?
Can I just explain on this?
Yeah, well, you can explain when we recommend to.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, okay.
Uh, is there a motion to close the public hearing? Oh. Oh, sorry. Go up. And you have to come to the mic and say your name and address.
Okay. I don't really know how this works, so I didn't know if you guys were going to talk about it before I had a chance to kind of say, because I want, I don't really know what you're what you are discussing, but I heard that you were going to talk about this and and we have a big interest in it.
And if that is the case, seeing that there wasn't public comment, I was just gonna wait for him to come into this piece, but Lyle could give a little information on it now.
Okay, so, cause maybe that'll help me know what to say.
Harvard, the public works came to me and said, hey, we need some help on this, on this ordinance. What it is, is that as the ordinance currently stands, any on property less than an acre, the building height was restricted to twenty one feet at the peak and fifteen feet on the wall height. However, a lot of people, the standard door height is fourteen feet. And the standard door size is garage door size is fifteen or fourteen feet. Which is allows people to get their RVs and things, because that's the reason why they build these buildings in the first place. So he said, all we need is to raise that one foot. So that's what we're doing is we're increasing the height from twenty to twenty one feet for the peak. And the wall height is sixteen feet. That will allow for those fourteen foot garage doors to go in. And allowing people to store their high profile items and stuff. Now, on anything, an acre or more, that still stands, I think it's twenty five feet. Yeah, it's twenty five feet on lots that are larger than an acre. That's the standard twenty five foot with eighteen foot exterior walls. So we're just raising it one foot on both the peak and the walls to allow these to standard four to fourteen foot doors.
Okay, awesome. Does that make sense? Well, yeah, that's, that's awesome. And so I guess I'm here to plead our case. Cause if we had an acre, we we would be able to do what we want to do, but we have a three quarter acre. And we are located, my name's Leanne Ossler. We're in the Remuda subdivision.
Can you give your address as well?
Yeah, do you? Okay, my address is three zero five six west, thirty six hundred north. And our lot backs up against the canal and the dirt road and the ranchettes to the north. Right? So we don't have or or won't ever have backyard neighbors there. And so so we want to build a two story garage building like that for our RV and stuff. We have a daughter that does aerial silks. We want to have a practice location for her to be able to do her thing. Right now she practices in a place that is, has a vault of thirty feet, but we we're thinking twenty four feet is what we'd like to get. As far as the pitch height and at the peak and then the walls eighteen to nineteen feet tall. But because we only have a three quarter acre, we don't fall into that. And when we come to the city to say like, how can we get a variance for this? The few people we've talked to, so that never happens. Like you can't get a variance, but we feel like our lot is a unique enough place because we don't have those backyard neighbors and there's going to be fifteen feet on both sides of where it will be built so that you know, it's not too close to the neighbors on both sides of us where the property line is.
Setback for your property line from the building would be fifteen feet on each side. Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, from side to side.
Side to side, yeah.
But from the back of our house, like
Right, it's.
It's a lot farther because we have three quarter acres. Yeah, and we don't have those backyard neighbors that that would be affected by that. So we just want to we just want to know, like, I guess we're, we think that maybe it should be done more on a case by case basis because everybody's lots are different. And I don't feel like we should be grouped in with people that only have a quarter acre lot, because I totally get a quarter acre lot, those houses are close together.
Less than an acre, not quarter acre lots.
Yeah, but you're, yeah.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
And so I'm trying to say like.
Oh, I'm sorry. My mistake.
We're on a three quarter acre, so I don't think we should, well, we're, we're just hoping that maybe we wouldn't have to be grouped in with people that are only on a quarter or a third. You know what I mean?
I understand what you're saying. I'm sorry.
Yeah. So anyway, that's, that's what I have to say. I don't know.
That's a good input.
From some of it though, if if we did raise this up to twenty feet for the, it's not twenty feet for the peak, it's twenty feet for the walls. Is that right?
No, it's twenty one feet for the peak and eighteen for the wall.
Sixteen for the walls.
Sorry, sixteen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're wondering if we could get twenty four for the peak and like nineteen for the walls. Kind of what, kind of what we've had drawn up. That's what we were hoping for, for, you know, kind of two different reasons. So I don't know. Like, how likely is it for us to get a variance on that? Or is that something you would consider?
Well, this, so this public hearing is for the ordinance in itself, so we'll take that into input into our discussion and the action part, but what I'm going to tell you here is you probably should go for the variance route and see. There's a whole thing in our code that does the whole five pieces. And if you meet those, you meet with a committee and and you have a good chance at getting that variance.
All right, so.
Best direction for you.
Yeah, okay, anyway.
We will take that because maybe we have a discussion through planning commission later that maybe we want to separate half acres, you know, there's something half acre and below and half acre and above or something like that.
If there's no possibility of a backyard neighbor and things like that.
Yeah, because we, we do, we butt right up against that and and you know, the county line's right there. And so we feel like we're in a unique enough spot that we could make something like that happen for us and wouldn't have any problem with neighbors or.
The hard part is there are other people that have acres, half acre and above that aren't in your scenario. So how do you regulate those ones as well? You know, that do have back neighbors or do have side neighbors and things like that. So that's where the case, the variance is your best bet for a case by case. But we can look at some of the half acre and above.
Yeah, it's discussions like this that help move change forward.
Yeah.
We've had many instances where we've made ordinance changes just because of discussions such as this, whether it be animals or something else. So anyway.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
There's anyone else? Say your name and address, please.
I'm Taven Rose. I live at twenty six eighty four Remuda Drive. I'm in support of this, no doubt. Definitely, the fourteen foot door height has definitely been a big restriction on on my building. And definitely love the fact that at least the sixteen foot wall is being reviewed. I do like the case by case scenario. However, again, where do you, where's the limits, right? But again, I do appreciate the review of this and and definitely it should help me with my building and I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments before we close the public hearing? I think that's the first time we ever had a public hearing that was positive.
I know, it's cool.
If there's no one else, this last call, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Close the public hearing.
Motion by Jason. Second by Connor. Is that Connor? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Onto our next item. Uh, no, sorry, sorry. Recommendation to city council, approval or denial of the amendment for such public hearing. I think they do bring up a good point that we can, maybe one of our work sessions, we can talk about.
Yeah, I was saying, we'll try and get her name, but it's already recorded, so that's.
We can talk about maybe separating them. I I like that we always know, just so you know, case by case is very hard for the city to defend because what one person gets. because what one person gets, someone else wants to. So from a legal standpoint, it's very hard to say, well, we decided with this current legislation or current group that this one was okay, but this one wasn't. So to have clear, very basic, specific ordinances are always more defendable for the city. But we can certainly talk about it in one of our work sessions.
I think it's a good idea, so.
So you'll put that on the list, Lyle, to
I will.
Remember?
Yep.
So do we wanna wait to recommend changes on this?
No, cause this one is
We gotta keep this one.
Yeah, this one, we can always modify from here. This at least puts it in the right direction.
I move, we recommend City Council approve the Amendment to Far West Ordinance Number 1744 to 190, amending this accessory, accessory building wall and eve height requirements for lots less than one acre.
Motion by Jason.
I'll second.
Second by Darren. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, onto our next public hearing, to receive public input regarding the proposed Peterson, Inc. slash Peterson Property Development Agreement. Is there a motion to go into the public hearing?
I move that we open a public hearing.
Hey, motion by Lyle.
Second.
Second by Greg. All in favor, say aye. Okay, we're now in the public hearing. I feel like I'm the best. Usually I would have the applicant give the discussion of this, which the applicant can surely come up. But I think I'm gonna give some of the history, just from a city standpoint. So, so everyone knows, cause there's not a lot of public in the room. But there are some modifications being made to, we'll call the Peterson site. They did not previously have a site plan from older buildings, et cetera. So one of the best ways to get them into, starts to get them into compliance, we basically created a plan. By doing that, we created a development agreement that allows them to be compliant on the seven acres that affects the new building with some additional information provided to the city on the existing infrastructure and buildings, along with a few things in the development agreement required by them, including, you know, as they go forward, that the rest of the site would come up to compliance as they develop. This is kind of that starting point and anything else that they want to change will then start to proceed in compliance with our code. So it's a very basic development agreement, but ties both parties. So there's a starting point. So that's the presentation. If there is anything else that you guys would like to add, you're welcome to.
Can you explain the wall? Every time you said true, there's nothing else to add.
And is there anyone in the public that would like to make a comment? If there is not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I move that we close the public hearing.
Okay, motion by Darren.
I'll second.
Second by Lyle. All in favor, say aye. Okay, next, recommendation to City Council, approval or denial of the proposed Peterson, Inc. Development Agreement.
I recommend the City Council to approve the proposed Peterson Incorporated Development Agreement.
Hey, motion by Lyle. Second by Jason. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, perfect. We'll do the one next one, the site plan, and then I'll explain for next week for you. Okay, recommendation to City Council, approval or denial of Peterson, Inc. slash Properties Modified Site Plan. Is there any questions on this? If you saw in the Dropbox, all the files, they have provided all of the 28-acre utilities, storm drain calculations, et cetera. And you saw in Matt's memo, he's content with all of that information. They've, the Public Works is content with what they've provided. So we're all in good favor, so.
Then I'll recommend to the City Council approval of Peterson Incorporated Modified Site Plan.
Okay, motion by Darren. Second by Connor. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, so next week, you guys will go to City Council for the same two line items. I will actually be back east next week, so I won't be here to give the report to City Council. Lyle will. However, I am going to send out, and if they're watching this, they'll have some information too. But I'm gonna send out an email to the City Council to explain how we got to where we are so that there's some history on why we are presenting what we are with the development agreement. So hopefully, we're good there. Okay, thank you, guys. Don't do anything wrong, okay? Thank you. Okay, next, approval of minutes.
We're excited to be your learning example.
There you go. Approval of minutes dated June 26, 2025.
I move that we approve the minutes dated June 26, 2025.
Hey, motion by Lyle.
Second.
Second by Greg. All in favor, say aye. Report on assignments. Greg?
Nothing at this time.
Lyle?
Okay, just be a second.
We should really just do
Just do me last, nevermind, it's okay. We had a park meeting. Tim brought up a few things. We had a park meeting last Wednesday and there was two fireworks shows that happened the last few weeks.
Like fireworks or like mental fireworks?
There was a fireworks show at, in your subdivision, Mountain View subdivision. And then the following week, there was another one. Another group was putting it on over at the Smith Family Park. They came to us, got the permits and everything like that. There was some pushback, there was a lot, not pushback, but there was a little bit of concern because when they were setting up the fireworks over at the Smith Family Park, where the same spot where they did the city ones, they blocked off the entire pathway. Nobody could get down there and there's no signage or anything saying, why is it blocked off? So there's gotta be better communication there. And also, we talked about the disc golf. Tim brought that up a little bit. Right now, we got four sponsors, but Katie sent us a text out and during the last City Council meeting, she brought up about one sponsors and stuff. Tim volunteered to donate, to sponsor a hole with the City Council, 100 bucks apiece, cause a hole's like 500 bucks or something. Anyway, but Katie sent us a text out and said, Rob Bolen, who is president, and I'm just reiterating what Tim said, he's president of the Professional Disc Golf Association. He happened to be in City Council meeting that night. And he said that he came to Katie and he's willing to provide the remaining $1,900 to help out. Well, he's trying, he'll round it up to help out with finishing the holes and anything else we need to complete this, this disc golf course. So talk about being in the right place at the right time. Yes, please do.
He also has vast knowledge of rules, regulations, the pros and cons of how things are set out. So he's a very, very good
Yeah, we hit, we hit the jackpot on that one. Also, our fishing club is, we have a full roster, we have 15 kids. Last Friday, I got a text from Mick and we were at nine. I got a little nervous and we put out, we have four signs we put out. And by Monday, we had 15, so. Anyway, so that class starts, I think, December, or no, not December, September 7th, I think.
You don't want 30 kids again?
Are you kidding me? Believe me, that was a real
That was exciting.
Oh, it was, yeah. When it's not you. September 6th is the first class. But anyway, and also, we are ready for installation to finish up the dock. The stringers and the decking were delivered. The Home Depot delivered the decking and everything. And then they've got the rest of the hardware there, so now it's just Public Works started to do the installation to finish that up. The cool thing is, is that they are, the materials were actually cheaper than I had estimated because I went and got pricing on just individual lanes. But since we bought in bulk, it's, our bottom line's gonna be, we're gonna be a lot better off, anyway. Long story short, it's ready to go. They're gonna start working on it as soon as they can. And trying to go through my list here. I think that's all I've got right now, pretty much. Oh, we're also gonna start working on the new metals park. I think they're talking, they're, they're, been in communication with the landowners for the rideaway. And they're getting, aren't they getting bids out right now or something for that, Tim? They're gonna put it out to bid? I can't remember.
Yeah, the two, two landlords we still need to talk to.
Okay.
And they're actually waiting for the final engineering so they go in and start putting the utilities.
That's what I meant, yeah, right.
Once they do that, then, you know, just start moving there.
Yeah, for some reason, I thought we'd already talked to the landowners on both sides of that easement.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, anyway.
I was supposed to be waiting, but I
Oh, really?
I'm not sure.
We're getting close, though. We're getting close to be able to start that, getting that infrastructure, starting with the utilities put in, so that's all I've got.
Thank you. Connor? Darren?
So we met
Oh, yeah, you're giving grace.
The other day. Transportation and active transportation for the general plan. I had to leave early. We started talking about some roads and trails and stuff, but I'm gonna
Oh, yeah, it's Jason.
Jason, because I had to, I had to go early because I had scouts. Believe it or not, you covered most of what we were gonna talk about anyway, so I'll keep mine. Well, then, guessing, I'm good to go from there then? Okay, so I just wanna make sure you have anything else. Okay. So, yeah, then, yeah, discovered a few new areas for roads and things we wanna discuss as we meet more. One thing I think would be really useful is if there was a way for us to get a larger printout of the road plans. Cause we had a few really good maps, but they're on hard-backed surfaces.
Probably the old ones.
Older and
If you, this will remind me, if you email me the docs that you want printed, I will forward them to Lindsay to have, and she can print big copies for us. Or you can even do it if you want. You can email it to Lindsay, however you wanna do it.
Sure, I can do that.
Yeah, she can print them off.
Okay, then I'll, I'll make sure to send out to the group that we can do that and see what ones would be best for our next meeting.
Yeah, definitely.
Youth City Council met this week as well, kinda took a summer, summer break, but they're, they're getting back together again. They've got a few items on their agenda, like the trunk or treat, some opportunities for service. Plus, since the city's contributing money to that play that's happening in North Ogden, looking at opportunities to get this community more involved through Youth City Council. So, there's that. And then we talked about the General Plan Committee. So then Traffic Committee, we actually had our first group of residents bring something to our attention before our last meeting. So we talked about, actually, Tim already brought this up, but some, some areas that we have opportunities for improving safety, particularly on the bend in 2575, on the north side of 2700. So brought a number of MUTCD-approved solutions as recommendations for the City Council to consider. City Council, so that plus two other things. One is collected data from all of our traffic signs for a month and ran analysis on it so we can identify the most fruitful times for those areas to be patrolled and get the most aggressive speeders so that, that will hopefully bring those into more safe compliance with speed. Then also, just starting the discussion for codifying state, uh, safety standards for new developments was the other piece. And since that was a lot to go over and it took a lot longer than that in City Council to go over it, we decided it would be good to have a work session to go over those in detail. So I'm in the process of scheduling that with City Council right now. That's it.
Very cool. I reported all my stuff in the work session, so I don't have any other updates other than we have between the general plan stuff and quite a few projects here and there coming down our pipeline. We've got a lot of stuff happening, so gear up. Okay, is there one last motion? Is there a motion for adjournment?
I move that we adjourn.
Okay, motion by Lyle.
Second.
Second by Greg. All in favor, say aye. Good job, guys. Yes.